Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the special meeting of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is October 23rd, 2018. It's 8:04 PM. I call the meeting to order. Have a roll call, please.
Mayor Cranjack.
Here.
Councilperson Zaversa. Eve Park.
O.
Here.
O'Shea.
Here.
M. Park.
Yep.
Wu.
Here.
Our attorney.
Present.
Our administrator.
Present.
Borough Clerk. Everyone's present except Councilwoman Park.
Thank you. Let's start this meeting the way we always do with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Day and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to go into closed session as there are some, one matter that we need to discuss in closed session?
Go move.
Second. Who in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the appropriate language for us to go into closed session?
Resolution authorizing closed session at meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, whereas the mayor and council of the borough of Englewood Cliffs has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain confidential matters, and whereas the minutes of this closed session will remain confidential as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act or shall be released when there is no further need for confidentiality as authorized by the borough attorney. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the borough of Englewood Cliffs will go into closed session for the following matters as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:4-12. Resolution to discuss pending litigation, discussion on attorney advisory regarding pending litigation entitled Chaffee versus Farrow, docket number B E R L 705818.
Thank you. So we're going to go into closed session. We're going to need about, at a minimum fifteen minutes and a maximum an hour. There's a very cute dog in the audience, so you could go and make friends with a nice dog there. Thank you, everyone. It took a little longer than expected. Can I have a motion to come out of the closed session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our borough council needs to make a couple corrections.
Yes. So, no new resolutions are being added to the agenda. No new ordinances are being added to the agenda. There will be, as we go through 226, 227, 228, 229, and 230, we are going to change one clause in each of those sets. So when the clerk calls the resolution before the motion is made, I will state the change so that the public knows about them. Each one of them is to ratify a different set of disciplinary charges as to Chief Chaffee. I also will note that we did give a rice notice to Chief Chaffee as an overabundance of caution, though we do not, there is certainly an argument that he's not entitled to a rice notice. He did not respond, and I'll put that on the record.
Furthermore, his attorneys were given that notice also, and they did respond. So they're well aware of it. And just for the public's information, when we speak of a rice notice, it's a notice that you have to give employees if you're going to discuss anything having to do with their employment.
Okay. It's just a table.
Good. Can I have a motion to open to the public for comment?
Aye.
Who in favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak at the microphone on the table up here, please raise your hand. Wait for me to recognize you. Come up, state your name and address, and let us know what you want to say.
Mayor, could I just say, because Councilwoman O'Shea made a point, the changes that you will hear for those five resolutions are really a typographical error in the first paragraph. So it's just a correction of a typographical error.
They don't change the substance of the actual intent of that resolution.
Because I know you all have them, so you can follow along when we do the votes.
Okay. So we're open for public comment.
Lauren Eastwood, Four Wheeler Drive. I have several things I want to discuss tonight. First, I want to discuss how extremely appalled I am by the complete lack of foresight which appears to have gone into the attempt to dismiss all of the charges against Chief Chaffee. Had that ill-thought-out, or perhaps intentionally brought-forward action succeeded, the taxpayers of the borough of Englewood Cliffs would have faced having to reinstate Chief Chaffee because if you have no disciplinary charges, you have no basis for having him suspended, reimbursing him for the vacation days he used, and paying his legal fees for the defense of all the charges he dismissed. That motion was made after the meeting had closed to the public, so the public had no opportunity to speak about it. And there was no disclosure to the public of the ramifications of it, which was just completely irresponsible, completely untransparent, and showed that you were placing your political paymasters ahead of the interests of the taxpayers of this community. I am curious as to how you think it's going to look when you dismiss the charges against Chief Chaffee and he collects what will be one of the highest, if not the highest pension in the state of New Jersey. How's it going to look when we are paying one of the highest pensions in the state to someone who recorded himself making racist and sexually explicit comments at work?
Who are you addressing, Ms. Eastwood?
Primarily Councilwoman Aversa and Councilwoman O., neither of whom seem to be interested. I also want to address several omissions in a campaign flyer I received today from Debbie Savari and Jimmy Song. And I'm just going to address the substance of what was a despicable flyer. I think that says all that needs to be said about that flyer. First, I want to point out that the settlements in the lawsuits were negotiated by the borough's insurance company, and that the borough settled because the insurer instructed it to settle. I'd also like to point out that the borough's insurance company paid almost $375,000, almost all of the $375,000. The taxpayers didn't pay it. Insurance companies don't pay that much money unless there is substantial liability. And I'm curious as to why Debbie Savari and Jimmy Song aren't talking about what Chief Chaffee did to warrant the insurance company making the payment that large. I'd also like to point out that the money is paid to retiring police officers are not discretionary. They are set forth in the PBA contract, which Councilman Aversa negotiated, the second most expensive contract in the state. The payment which Chief Chaffee will receive when he retires is likely to be the largest Englewood Cliffs has ever paid, probably $600,000 or more, thanks to Councilman Aversa and Councilwoman O. Why aren't Debbie Savari and Jimmy Song talking about the huge retirement payments that Councilman Aversa and Councilwoman O approved? I'd also like to point out that all of this was discussed extensively at council meetings. So Debbie Savari and Jimmy Song knew, or should have known, that their flyer was inaccurate and misleading when they put it together. If Debbie Savari and Jimmy Song are lying about facts that are so easily verified, how can anybody trust them on anything? I also want to address their comments about Lieutenant Tracy's lawsuit. Tape 61B, beginning at approximately 1:07:20, is extremely informative. On that tape, Captain Murphy says, "If it gets out about Tracy's lawsuit." Chief Chaffee replies, "Well, I just told Tracy, and don't repeat this. I gave the shit to Andrew, right? And Andrew called me, and Andrew went to." Guess who he went to? He went to Terry Plucker, because Terry Plucker hates Carol McMaro. Terry Plucker went to, uh, what's her name? Loretta Weinberg. Loretta Weinberg is the one that did the whole thing against Ziza. I'm telling you so. Loretta Weinberg goes and tells Terry Plucker, and Loretta Weinberg will pull it out. Chief Chaffee says, "Now, I went to Jimmy in the hallway yesterday, last week, the week before I left. Jimmy, what's going on here?" Chief Chaffee then impersonates Lieutenant Tracy, saying, "Well, you know." Chief Chaffee then says, "Well, listen. Andrew's got a good hook, and I told him who he's got. I said, 'Let him go with it. Let him put it in the Sunday paper.'" Okay, because the Sunday paper, everybody reads the Sunday paper. It'll be trouble. This guy will be expletive, hiding under a expletive rock. Okay? Don't you know? Let it come out, and then let the guys start coming up here. Captain Murphy asks, "What did he say?" Chief Chaffee replies, "He said, 'Well, does he have a big enough person?'" Chief Chaffee says that he told Lieutenant Tracy, "This is who he's got." Chief Chaffee says Lieutenant Tracy asked, "How did he get Loretta Weinberg?" Chief Chaffee then says, "I told him because he went to Terry Plucker, and Terry Plucker hates Carol, and Terry Plucker, and Island, and Loretta." Captain Murphy says, "Island had the juice." Chief Chaffee says, "Island and Loretta were like this, so she's got a connection, and she can say to her, 'Please, I need your help. I really.'" And Loretta's got the connections for the news and shit, so do it. Do it. You know, we waited all this time. I backed off and stuff. Captain Murphy says, "I know, because Tracy started the ball rolling. Once he started that ball rolling..." Chief Chaffee says, "Now, he's like he wants to stop. He can't now. That, this is it. Now we just got to get the balls, got to go." People who claim they are concerned about litigation against the borough should be very concerned about Chief Chaffee encouraging litigation against the borough. Chief Chaffee has obligations to the borough, and one of them isn't getting the borough sued and setting up suits against the borough.
So, an example of your tax dollars not at work. Okay? That was during business hours. Okay? So when you hear about this, all these things that we're dealing with right now, that's just a little snippet, okay? Those are your tax dollars. If you're here, or if you're at home, this is what people do when they come to work in Englewood Cliffs, okay? Well, some people. Anybody else?
Russell Perino, 220 Fabio Avenue. What I found most upsetting to me about this slide that came out today, and I know it's campaign season and things slide back and forth, but Carol McMaro is at least on some level a victim with what's happened in the past, well, several years, I guess we can go back to, but more specifically since these tapes came out. And for her name, and I'm addressing the council here, to be used in the way that it is, and turning this upon her, she's the victim. And in our society, the victim is supposed to have not just the benefit of the doubt, but respect and understanding. And for a local organization in our town to put something out that turns on the victim, I think is despicable. And anyone and everyone in this room should be able to say, "You know what? It's not right. It's not right." Now, we've seen in the past couple of months here with members of council refusing to speak out and say, "You know what? What Chief Chaffee said was not right." That's bad. This, in my mind, is even worse. And I just hope the members of the public can see through this... garbage is not even the right word. It's just, it's an abomination that they feel that the residents in this town are so foolhardy that they believe the rubbish that's put in these flyers. We've seen it year after year. I remember the Stop the Merger was the one, and it went from there on, you know, where one email from a councilperson was enough to have lawn signs on people's front lawns. And it's not right. So at the end of the day, this election should be about honesty and integrity, because if you don't have that, you've got nothing.
Hi, Maria Valari, 45 Jane Drive. I got that mailing today, and it was pretty disgusting to read what was written on there because I think it's a shame that for Ms. Savari and Mr. Song to attack Ms. McMaro when really they should be putting out there what they intend to do for our town, and not just a smear campaign, and to insinuate that Councilman Park and Donald Yee are not going to do right by this town simply because they're Republicans. And I think that's just a disgusting thing. I also want to say, I'm listening to some conversations, some here tonight, actually, about how we should take into consideration all the years that Chief Chaffee has given to this town. First of all, it's a job, and he got paid to do that job. And to say that we should overlook all the wrong that this man has done, not just to McMaro, Councilman Park, who's a lovely man, I think, these are decent human beings, to say that we haven't even heard the bulk of what's on these tapes. I'm scared to hear what else is on these tapes. And to sit here and say we should consider his service to this town really scares me because if this were a principal, a superintendent, a, hey, a Hollywood big guy, they're, I'm sorry, we have to be able to hold people accountable for wrongdoing. We can't reward people and forgive some really egregious things that have been done.
Carol McMaro, 489 Summit Street.
Gloria.
Excuse me, Councilman? I just want to make sure that I have your attention. Well, I wouldn't know that because you didn't have the respect of lifting your head up. So, again, this is an important matter for our town, and I'd like to know that you're hearing me when I'm speaking to you. I'm not going to spend a lot of time, Councilwoman O. and Councilman Aversa, for those that are watching at home, that they won't even pick their face up and acknowledge because they know what they did is really wrong, and their body language speaks for itself. So I'll address the rest of the council because those two members do not understand what the definition of being a council member is. Okay. So, the campaign of Debbie Savari and Jimmy Song, and Jimmy Song, I've never even met Jimmy Song, and he doesn't know me, he doesn't know my husband, and for him and his campaign, and Ms. Savari, who's running a campaign of bringing everyone together, of an Englewood Cliffs for Earl, with the flyers that they're all so wonderful and great people, well, nice people don't put flyers out like this. They don't take a decorated officer who served 42 years and write this trash, okay? Because that's all the calls I've been getting today from the residents, saying that you have stooped to the lowest of lows, to attack retired Deputy Chief McMaro and former Lieutenant Muir, because why? Because they didn't fall into line with what Chief Chaffee wanted them to do, because they didn't want to change reports, maybe, when they were asked and had their reports sent back that they didn't like it? I don't know what that noise is.
Yeah, hold on. Okay.
Okay, thank you. I thought we had to leave the room, maybe. Okay, if I could go back. They talk about, "Where's your money?", hundreds of thousands of dollars handed over to McMaro and Muir, the bitter truth. Well, Debbie Savari and Jimmy Song need to learn the truth, and they need to learn the facts. And they're going to be learning the facts very quickly when tape 61B is played, because I can tell you the one person that is not on any of these 120 tapes, it's Mike McMaro. And you have plenty of other offices, they're cursing, they've got racial slurs, they're talking about sexual connotations, and we all know what they spoke about, maybe, and there's a multitude of violations of their rules and regulations. But the one person that you don't hear anything about on those 120 tapes is Deputy Chief McMaro. You do hear two tapes about Lieutenant Muir, and I wonder if those tapes were turned into his hearing when he had Internal Affairs filed against him, because what I heard on those tapes were quite troubling about the way he was treated by former Captain Marzy, Chief Chaffee, and whoever else was in that room with Lieutenant Muir at that time. So that's something that this council would be looking at later on. But they talk about the 2016 Deputy Chief McMaro, Carol McMaro's husband, or what he was accused of. I can tell you right now, Councilwoman O., Councilman Aversa, guess what? 61B clears Mike McMaro. 61B shows a conversation that took place between the chief of police, I believe Lieutenant McDermott was in the room, and between Captain Murphy, who was doing the Internal Affairs on Mike McMaro at that time. Wow! What a surprise! So you have the Internal Affairs Officer, who, do we know what the definition of Internal Affairs is? Councilwoman O., do you know what the definition of Internal Affairs is?
This is not going back and forth, okay?
I have a right to ask you.
You know what? You made your comment.
Okay, so you refuse to answer me?
Where is my?
Do you have any idea what Internal Affairs are?
You're just...
Just ignore me? Is that what you said?
You can say whatever you want.
Okay, well, I have a right to ask a question. Okay. Well, Internal Affairs are supposed to be kept confidential. They're supposed to be kept confidential at all times unless there are four reasons under the AG guidelines that can only have them released. And absolutely, in the middle of an Internal Affairs, which is what it appears was taking place, because the date of that tape by Chief Chaffee's indications was April 1st of 2016. So we are all going to anxiously be awaiting to find out what the date of that Internal Affairs was finalized on. These are very serious allegations, Ms. O., Mr. Aversa. If a chief of police engaged with his captain in Internal Affairs in an ongoing investigation about a deputy chief of police in an effort to find him guilty, outrageous. And you have the audacity to write why there are lawsuits? There are lawsuits because you are protecting Chief Chaffee, and you have been protecting Chief Chaffee for years and years and years. That's why we have these lawsuits. Just to name a few. And I saw Mrs. Casada in the back. She has quite memories about her son in the Agresta lawsuit of what was done to Danny Casada. I know my son was in the other car with Howie Mann's son, okay, when the goings-on were taking place, which Robert Agresta did end up suing for, and you're all aware of it. So there was the Holloman case, there was Gallagher, there was Muir, there was McMaro, there was Agresta, there was Shalub, there was Baby Khan, there was Towser, there was Misk, and there was Lauren Eastwood. And guess what they all had in common? The defendant was Mike Chaffee. Mike Chaffee has been sued in the history of this town more than anyone else, and you keep covering it up. And you're trying to cover it up now, as well. But this time, there are audio tapes. And so far, we've only heard two of them. There are 118 audio tapes that are still outstanding. And I ask you as elected officials and representatives of this town, how do you feel that these tapes should be covered up? Why do you feel they should be covered up? Councilwoman O.? Do you feel that the audio tapes should be allowed to be public for everyone to hear?
Just because you're on the other side, you don't have the right to come up there and ask me questions. This is not a...
That's okay. You don't have to answer, Gloria, if you're uncomfortable.
I absolutely have every right to ask you questions.
If you were sitting on this side, ask too long ago...
Correct. I'm being respectful to you. I'm asking you a question.
You're talking your opinion, okay?
No, I'm not.
About everything.
No, I'm not. No, these are facts.
Okay.
I'm asking you a straight question. We all, this is a fact, there are 118 audio tapes that have not been played yet. Do you believe the public has a right to hear what's on those audio tapes?
Well, I believe they do.
I'm not asking, I'm asking, Councilwoman O.
I don't want anybody to think that I don't. I do.
This is public question, because...
Yes. You know, I have a right to ask. If you don't want to answer, then say, "I don't want to answer." Councilman Aversa, do you believe that the 118 tapes should be made public so that all the residents can know anything that happened on those tapes?
I will give my answer to any of those.
Now, I'm asking you right now. That's a yes or a no. Councilwoman Park, do you believe that the 118 audio tapes that we have not yet heard, should they be played for the public?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Councilwoman O'Shea, do you believe that the 118 tapes should be played for the public so that the public knows what went on?
Yes, I do, because I believe they were made during work hours in borough buildings by borough employees, and therefore they are the property of the borough, and they should be made public.
Councilman Wu, do you believe that those tapes should be made public so that all of the residents can hear everything?
Yes, I do, and I also, my reason is because, you know, for the rest of the police department, we need to make sure that, for the future, all policies and procedures are followed to the point. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one last question for Councilwoman O. Councilwoman O., you say you support the police department. That's a picture of the deputy... That's a picture of the Deputy Chief. Do you support this flyer and the trash that was written here about the Deputy Chief?
Again, you're directing questions to me right now.
Yes, I am.
And I guess I'd be watching a little video clip for your campaign.
No, I just want to, I have a right to know.
As you said, the other side just gave about the recordings, it was very well rehearsed, right?
No. It's not rehearsed, ma'am, it's not rehearsed. I'm just asking you, you say you support law enforcement. Do you support this trash that was put out?
Stop, stop, okay?
You see, because when you...
I know what you're doing.
No, I'm not doing anything, ma'am. When you support law enforcement, this is a statement for all of you, when you support law enforcement, you support all of them. You don't pick and choose the police officers that you want to support. And Councilwoman Aversa, I will remind you, that you are the one that had the Deputy Chief suspended for forty-five days. You took forty-five days of pay out of his salary. And when he attempted to talk about this, you all told him, "You don't like it? Sue us." You told him to sue you. So he was left no choice. And by the way, there was no vote of the appropriate authority. No one voted on it. No one did anything. They just went, and somebody gave a direct order to Janice Romano to dock his pay for forty-five days without a vote of the council. The two of you should be held responsible for the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that was paid, because you caused it. You caused it. And I'm gonna leave you with one thought. This is the picture of the woman whose life was saved, okay? When the Deputy Chief and three of the officers that he worked with went to that burning car, he didn't care if she was a Republican, a Democrat, an Independent, an Indian, Chinese, black, white, doesn't matter. The car was on fire. Everybody was very scared. Thank God for this girl, that Mike McMorro is a licensed electrician, okay? Because that car was already filled with smoke, and he put his hand on that car to show the officers that it wasn't gonna be electrocuted to them. That guy's a hero. You people disgust me. You disgust me.
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
So, Michael Towser, homeowner, Nine Tretzel Road. Because I, I don't live here, fortunately, I don't get the flyers, so, in that sense, it's a break. I'm a homeowner, but I just wanted to, on a lighter note, congratulate Councilwoman O'Shea. It's good to see you up there. I don't think anybody's taken the interest that you've taken in this, in this town. I think, uh, everybody knows how, what a straight hour you are, and I'm happy to see it. And I was wondering, is there any way that, uh, you might be able to get Officer Shalub back here, or Scott Murrah? Like, are they, is it possible to get them to come back?
Uh, I think one's moved away, and the other one's retired.
Okay. But we couldn't try?
That's it, well, we'll note that.
Oh, by the way, I sent an email to each of you today, so...
Thank you.
I don't know if you've seen it.
I did, thank you.
And, and last month, which is the week before when I was here, when I said, I believe I said I sent something in a text, by text, I meant a document, so I didn't...
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Fine, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Dave DiGigorio, one sixty-five Charlotte Place. Uh, I sort of would like to take this whole spectacle of what we've been experiencing, and I'd like to calculate how much time, and how much effort, and how much money has gone into all of this back-and-forth fighting, neighbors fighting back and forth. And if, I'd like to take it, and I'd like to just turn it into something that, if it never happened, let's imagine. And if all of that energy and all of that negativity were used to be imaginative in this town, to be innovative in this town, to put this town on the map in a positive light, we are the laughingstock of Bergen County. I hear it all the time, I've traveled to town, "Oh, you're from Englewood Cliffs? What kind of problems do you have there?" Oh, my God. And I think it's important to be, have a vision, and it's impossible to have a vision when you have all of this internal strife back and forth. Absolutely impossible. Um, you know, I've, I've put, uh, some ideas out there, and unfortunately, the mayor has mocked me for them, cobblestone streets here and there to slow traffic down, um, and I've been mocked. Uh, and it's unfortunate that I have been mocked, because I think that this town, as I said in pa, in the past, could really set the standard for all towns. It's small enough, but it's not nimble. It's, it's paralyzed in this internal, uh, this internal problem that seems to have its roots, uh, in various areas. And there's been a lot of, uh, bad blood, and that bad blood has really seeped into the mechanisms of this town, making it inefficient, giving, uh, giving very, very bad working conditions, uh, and making everyone miserable. I can't imagine what it would be to be a police officer in this town. I can't imagine what it would be to work for the public works in this town with all of what's going on. There's been things also that have bothered me no end. The mayor has criticized me numerous times for my feelings. He says it's feelings, and I operate on facts. I spoke with somebody recently, and they were commenting on certain things about the commemorative stone that was used, uh, that was moved by the mayor. And the mayor had a choice. The mayor could have, he told me this, it's not original, but the mayor had a choice. He could have dug his feet in, as he did, because that person happened to be on the other side, and move it or remove it from the park. But he could have said, "Let's, let's make it right. Let's make it right." That would have made him a rock star in town. But he didn't. He removed it, and then, under pressure, he had to put it back, and then he moved the stone again, and that further put salt in the wound. And it showed me something about this mayor, that the mayor could have had goodwill and could have reached out. Now, there's another episode that the mayor took the name of a mayor that has been, served the town for forty years. Like him or not like him, he served this town for forty years, and he was erected time and time again, back into office. But the mayor, unilaterally, took that sign down to, uh, on the side of the administrative building. He could have reached out to the deceased Joe Perez's son, and he could have said, "Joe, come on, let's make this right." But he didn't. He didn't. And that caused more division, and more division. That has resulted now in a mayor that is dealing with a housing crisis. Six hundred units that our planning board president has encouraged, basically. Residential units that are going to be built on Sylvan Avenue. Because the planning board, three times, turned down...
Let him speak. Let him speak, everyone, it's okay.
But the eye, the eyes were off the ball. We've been spending too much time on this animosity.
No, no, let, let the resident speak. Even though you may not agree with him, he has a right to speak, and I don't certainly agree with him.
I am a resident that has vision. Okay, cobblestone streets were one. Cable access channel, so we can watch these meetings, is another. Oh, who said, "Jesus Christ"?
Someone over there.
Okay.
That's okay, go ahead. You can finish.
A state-of-the-art recycle facility is another. Germany, I just read today, is the number-one recycler in the world. Why doesn't Englewood Cliffs turn into the number-one recycler in Bergen County?
We don't have a landfill. I don't want a landfill in town.
I'm not talking about a landfill, landfill, I'm talking about a recycle station that would be fenced off, every time there's a wind, and under Mayor Perez, I've mentioned this, and under you, I'm mentioning this, and I've mentioned it, every time there's a wind, the trash blows all the way up nine W. Why, why can't we fix that? Why can't we make a state-of-the-art recycle, uh, facility?
I.D.P.W. does a great job.
Why can't we build our own library in town? Forget about buckles. We could build a library for our students. Why can't we build sidewalks up and down Charlotte Place to make ours, to make our, to make our young children safer, so they can walk to school instead of being driven to school?
Folks, folks, you, you have to let the resident speak. You don't have, you don't have to agree with him.
You know, the people behind me that are commenting, it's, it's fine. I am coming up, excuse me, I am coming up with some innovative, good ideas, and you people are laughing. So where are your minds? You come up with some good ideas to make our quality of life better in this town. Why don't you, why don't you look at other towns, north of here, south of here, where the council meetings and the council people can talk to each other and come up with some solutions? You people, particularly the Republicans, at this point, because you're in power, are misusing your power. You're not reaching out, and there, you have not reached out. And I just illustrated all the reasons why you have not reached out. Because your feelings are none. You had no feelings for anybody who was a predecessor. They were all, as you said, criminals, or what did you say? They should be thrown in prison?
No, I understand.
No, no, you said something to that effect. It's on tape. And that is wrong.
Okay, let me...
What you said is wrong.
Let me reach out to you.
And you should apologize.
Let me reach out to you.
No, no.
No, hold on, let me, let me reach out to you. Will you, will you join me right now to, hold on, will you join me right now to condemn hate speech, racism, secondary justice?
Will you join...
Let me finish.
Go ahead.
Violent speech? Will you join me in condemning that?
Put the sign back up.
No, no, that's a different issue. No, 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 no.
We don't pick the stone in the right place.
You won't do that, will you? You will join me in condemning hate speech?
I will...
That's a separate issue.
Excuse me.
This is fundamental.
Excuse me, you're arguing American values. You're changing the subject. I am talking about innovation in this town.
You won't do that, will you?
I am talking, you are, because you're, because you're so weak...
You can't innovate.
That's the only way that you can argue. And you're a lawyer, and I'm not, and that's how you argue, by changing the subject?
No, no.
I'm talking about innovation, Mario.
The subject is very serious for all of our residents.
No, 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 excuse me.
So you're okay with racism?
No, no, you are changing the subject.
No, I'm okay with it.
No, no, that's a bad lawyer technique, and you must be a terrible lawyer if you're doing that to me. I am telling to you, uh, Ms. McMorro was up here a lot longer than five minutes, excuse me. I am telling you, Mario, keep on the subject that I'm talking about, and don't change the subject to suit you. I am talking about innovation in this town, I am talking about how you felt about certain residents that you picked out, and that you insulted and hurt their feelings. I am talking about that. Nothing else.
Okay.
I'm not talking about, I'm not gonna change the subject.
The subject of this meeting is hate speech. The subject of this meeting is hate speech.
Excuse me.
Okay.
Let me look at the minutes, I don't think it says. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
No, I'm not done yet. I'm not done yet.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm not done yet.
All right, what else would...
I will, I am not done yet. Excuse me.
Hold on, folks, let him speak. Let him speak.
Let me finish.
Let him speak.
I think everyone needs to take a breath. I think everyone needs to think about...
You're the only one yelling. Come back ahead.
I think everyone needs to think about a vision for this town. I think everyone needs to take a breath and have goodwill for each other. I think everyone needs to not demonize each other. I think everyone needs to really put your best foot forward. Everybody, everybody, everybody. I think I have through what I've said.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard? I, I just want to also mention to you that, uh, Mr. DiGigorio mentions the Borough Hall had a name on it, and I took it down, because I really don't want to be the only town in New Jersey that doesn't have a Borough Hall named after the borough, not after an individual that never got approval to put their name on it in the first place. So the name came down. The Rock in the Park, never authorized either, we dealt with it. I also, I also want to make, I want to make it clear also that the recordings that we're discussing here were made by the chief himself. No one else made them. So he was the only person who knew he was recording, so you could, you could gauge or judge his own intelligence and mental state by doing that, um, on your own, I won't do it here. Uh, the other thing, I'm very glad and very happy to report that the morale in the police department has, has gone up tremendously, uh, since we did what we did with this chief. The officer in charge is Lieutenant David Hill. I'm going to arrange a meet and greet with him. He's doing a fabulous job. He's a law and order, by-the-book person. I heard him on those tapes actually say the way things should be done to the chief, when the chief was saying, "Do them the wrong way." Okay? And I think he's a, he's a good officer, he's a righteous man, he's the right guy for the job, okay? Right now, he's taking a great, um, he's showing us great ability to manage a very dysfunctional police department, and he's got my utmost support. Um, we're not in his way, he's doing his job, we don't need to be involved. Okay? Also, uh, you know, I asked Mr. DiGigorio if he would condemn hate speech. I've asked so many people if they would condemn hate speech, if they would condemn racism. You're out of order, sir, you don't have the floor. Let me finish. I've, I've asked, I've, I've asked, I've asked many people, uh, including the, the police union and other people, will you join me in condemning hate speech? A lot of our residents have, have called me in tears, screaming, upset, angry, that, that this could actually be going on during work hours, using borough resources. Uh, and, and, you know, I, I tell them, "I'm dealing with it, and I will deal with it to the end. We're not cutting deals as, as Aversa and O and Park, Ellen Park wanted to do. We're not doing that." Because the reason why is, people need to hear, there needs to be a cleansing, and then we move forward. We reconcile the past, and then, Mr. DiGigorio, we have our kumbaya moment, okay? But we're not there yet, we're getting there. Is there anybody else in the public that wishes to be heard? Otherwise, I'll, I'll make, I'll ask for a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Okay, we're, we're now closed for the public comment. We're going to resolutions. Uh, the, the first one is Resolution two thousand and eighteen, two-two-five, amend resolution eighteen dash two-eleven, placing Michael Chaffee on administrative leave. Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second?
Second.
To have a roll call.
Councilwoman Aversa?
Counselperson de Versa?
This is a change from what we had before, right? So you're saying, so we're talking about now paying Chief 120 days to take his leave, whereas my original resolution was 120 days unpaid.
No, the original resolution was without pay. That was my resolution. And then, there was some confusion. Mine was with pay. No, mine was with pay. Then you asked for without pay. There was some confusion. It should be under the attorney's advice. It should be with pay. He's retiring on November 1st. It's two weeks. I don't want to jeopardize any of the charges by making it without pay as I know you want to do. So can I have a vote, please?
So move.
We did a... Mr. Versa?
Counselperson de Versa?
Doesn't know? Fine.
Oh? Well, not either, without pay.
Is that a no?
Okay.
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
Okay, next one. Resolution 2018-226, ratified disciplinary charges against Michael Chaffee dated November 20th, 2017.
So moved.
Second. Have a roll call.
Counselperson de Versa?
As far as uncle January charges were dismissed, do I abstain?
They were not dismissed.
I did it on October 10th.
No, you did not.
I'd like to call it, that's how I understand it.
No, you did not. No, you did not. You actually ratified the charges by voting for a hearing. Don't interrupt me. You voted to ratify them when you voted for a hearing officer to be appointed.
I abstain.
Oh? For the same reasons I'm all sorts of saying.
What's that reason?
We took a vote. When you...
There was no vote. There was no vote. Stop making up stories. There was no vote.
There was no vote. There's a video.
There was no vote. Go watch the video. All right, that's an extension.
Yeah, because you have instructed the clerk to turn it off, turn the video off.
The meeting was adjourned.
Improper motion to dismiss all of the charges against Chief Chiapi. It was improper under Roberts rules and it was improper due to the fiduciary duty owed to the borough who has started these disciplinary charges in good faith and with substantial evidence. It is an improper motion. Therefore, I instructed the clerk that it was an improper motion and I stand by that decision.
Moreover, the public...
No vote was taken.
Right. Moreover, the public did not have an opportunity to comment on that.
Emery, you think it's proper for the mayor to just walk out from the meeting?
The meeting was adjourned.
In the middle of the agenda when he didn't... No, you did not finish the new business and all...
The meeting was adjourned. I'm sorry when you let down, I am sorry you let down the chief.
It was improper in my opinion. I'm sorry that your motion to dismiss... No, you're going to pay him for two weeks.
We're not the judges.
Put his retirement in.
120 days, something like that.
Yep, it's not 120 days, it's two weeks.
All right.
Counselperson O'Shea? Yes. And Park?
Yes.
Whoa. You all count.
Yes.
No public comment at this time, please. No public comment at this time, please. No public comment at this time, please. I yelled out. He yelled out. No public comment at this time, please. We are taking a vote. Madam Clerk?
I'm done.
Did you take all the votes? I didn't hear that.
Yes, I did.
Ratify the charges. Mark Park, vote yes?
Yes. We have two extensions and three yeses.
Okay. All right, 227...
Mark Park and Councilman Woo voted yes to ratify the charges.
Three yeses and two no's.
The charges, thank you.
227, ratified disciplinary charges against Michael Chaffee dated May 3rd, 2018.
Right. And the typographical correction is to the first paragraph dated May 3, 2018, for audio taping surreptitiously by the chief, non-content. We did not have the tapes at that time. We issued these charges based upon the behavior.
We need a motion?
So move. Second. Have a roll call.
Counselperson de Versa?
I would dismiss or abstain?
Oh?
Abstain.
O'Shea?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes. 228, ratified disciplinary charges against Michael Chaffee dated August 30th, 2018.
Typographical error in paragraph number one after the words dated August 30th, 2018 should read, "For improper use of the borough ECBD email system to send an email to a subordinate."
Need a motion?
So move. Second.
Counselperson de Versa?
What are we on, 228?
Yes.
Next one.
Oh? O'Shea?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
229?
229, ratified disciplinary charges against Michael Chaffee dated September 12th, 2018.
Again, the typographical error in paragraph one after the date for contents, this discipline is for contents in tapes 102 and 100.
So move.
Sexual contact, sexual discussion and a threat of murder.
We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselperson de Versa?
Would you dismiss or abstain?
Counselwoman O? O'Shea?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
230?
230, ratified disciplinary charges against Michael Chaffee dated September 21st, 2018.
This is, the typographical change is in the first paragraph after the date for the contents in tape 61B, formerly known as tape 61.
Need a motion?
So move. Second.
Counselperson de Versa?
Would you dismiss or abstain?
Oh?
Abstain.
O'Shea?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes. 231, authorized amendment to disciplinary charges against Michael Chaffee dated August 30th, 2018.
What was amended? It's in the resolution. But the charges, adding charges to the August 30th about the improper email to charge the violation of statutory misconduct as to Chief Chiapi and violation of the borough's personnel policies and procedures, most particularly violating the social media policy for which we have a zero tolerance policy.
Need a motion?
So move. Second.
Counselperson de Versa?
Would you dismiss or abstain?
Oh?
Okay, okay.
It's okay. He's living in a fiction. It's okay.
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes. 232, authorized amendment to disciplinary charges against Michael Chaffee dated September 12th, 2018.
And before you call for a vote, this is to add violation of the borough's personnel policies and procedures with respect to workplace violence. We have a zero tolerance policy calling for immediate dismissal of an employee who violates it. That's going to be added to these charges.
Motion?
So move. Second.
Counselperson de Versa?
Abstain.
Oh?
Abstain.
O'Shea?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes. 233, amend not to exceed the amount in resolution...
Before you move on, I'll then state for the record that the charges have not been dismissed. The charges have now been ratified and approved and an amendment has been approved for two sets of those charges. Thank you.
Okay, 233, amend not to exceed the amount in resolution 18-209 for Alan C. Roth Esquire. Get a motion. So move. Second. Go vote.
Counselperson de Versa?
No.
Oh?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes. 234, amend not to exceed the amount in resolution 18-210 for Brian Kronick Esquire. So move. Second.
Counselperson de Versa?
No.
E. Park?
Abstain.
I'm sorry. Oh?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes. Okay, we're going to introduce ordinance 2018-18-17, ordinance to repeal ordinance number 18-07 that amended code chapter 2-13 to establish promotional procedures to position the chief of police. The public hearing will be on November 8th, 2018. Yes.
The reason?
The reason was that we created this policy for people to be eligible and considered for promotion to chief of police in Englewood Cliffs. We consulted with the PBA and others. We made modifications to that policy through the year and then we adopted it. We went out three times to ask for applicants who are eligible for the role of chief of police in Englewood Cliffs from our existing police officers, which is where we have to look for our next chief. And no one expressed any interest whatsoever in becoming chief. So it's my view that, and I'm hoping you agree with me on this, is my view is that since no one was interested, we need to go back to the way it was where we will select someone to take that position in the future when the current chief, Michael Chaffee, retires. That's the reason.
I thought we went through all this process to make it open and fair.
We did. We made it open and fair. We went out three times. We had, at one time, we had 11 eligible people, I believe, and no one came back expressing any interest whatsoever within, I think it was a week or 10 days, of notifying them very formally that they were eligible and they just had to express interest to us by returning a signed document and becoming part of the process. So I'm not one to waste time and energy. If people don't want it that way, then we'll find another way to get a chief of police here.
When did we try that last?
I believe it was in August.
So since the situation's a little different, why don't we go back? Because I thought we did pretty good job going through that policy.
It was a great policy and I...
We had a lawsuit, though.
We had one lawsuit and we dealt with it. It was, the PBA sued and we accommodated their request to include people who didn't have four-year college degree or four years military service with an honorable discharge. They wanted another category of eligible police officer, which was based on the tenure here as a police officer. So we actually included that. And even after we did that, no one expressed any interest whatsoever. So now it's back to us. We'll make the decision.
I think, Mario, I really think we did a good job with that. I really did. Because we really made it fair to open to everyone. I think now that the situation's a little different...
What do you mean by that, that the situation's different?
Well, we now have somebody in place, the chief is gone, so maybe it will be different. Why don't you try one more time? I think that policy procedure's...
No, I would not support that because it was fair then and it's fair now and no one expressed any interest. So quite frankly, I don't want this to be made a mockery, okay? We gave them the opportunity. If you're saying to me that the current chief maybe had an influence on this, that's too bad. These are grown men, they're professionals, they're law enforcement officers. If they want a job, they need to tell us. We invited them. And they didn't respond. I respect that. So now we'll just do it another way.
What are you to say, they didn't like what we did? Instead of going through this whole motion about, you know...
Actually, it's a process, Gloria. We created this merit-based promotion policy. No one was interested. And again, we went out three times, we modified it. We had all bona fide and good-faith intentions. I can't understand what happened with the union, why they didn't want to have anybody participate in our process. But, you know, in life, you miss your opportunities sometimes and this was a missed opportunity. No, I actually created a very nice way of doing this and I am not wasting another minute on this, okay? We're going to do this our way now.
Counsel, now, what was your police mission?